Okay, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have a presentation that's going to be made by the Canadian Volunteer Fire Service, and Pam from, where is it? Kentville Fire Department, going to present the awards tonight.
It's truly an honor to stand here before you today on behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association to present one of the most prestigious recognitions of our organization, the Lifetime Achievement Award. This year, we are proud to celebrate an exceptional individual whose dedication, service, and leadership have left an indelible mark on the volunteer fire service community. Please join me in congratulating the 2024 recipient Reed Wynott of the Bridgewater Fire Department. Reed's career in the fire service is nothing short of extraordinary. With 50 years of service, his unwavering commitment to protecting his community and mentoring the next generation of firefighters embodies the very spirit of volunteerism. Reed has not only responded to countless emergencies, but has also been instrumental in shaping the culture of safety, camaraderie, and excellence within the Bridgewater Fire Department. Throughout his tenure, Reed has demonstrated a passion for sharing his knowledge and expertise. From training new recruits to enhancing operational protocols, he's ensured that the legacy of the Bridgewater Fire Department is one of resilience and readiness. His mentorship has inspired many to follow in his footsteps, fostering a stronger, more connected fire service community. Reed's contributions extend beyond his department. His leadership and advocacy for volunteer fire service have made a lasting impact on our collective mission to seek third communities across Canada. He exemplifies what it means to serve selflessly, and his dedication reminds us all why we choose this path. We would like to express our sincere gratitude to Makita for their support of this award. As a valued partner, Makita's commitment to recognizing the outstanding contributions of individuals like Reed is a testament to their belief in the power of community and volunteerism. Their sponsorship ensures that we can continue to honor those who have given so much to protect and serve. All the tools on the table are donation from Makita to the recipient's department. Reed, as you accept this Lifetime Achievement Award, know that your impact reaches far beyond the walls of your fire hall. Your leadership, dedication, and compassion have touched countless lives, and your legacy will inspire future generations of volunteer firefighters. This is the first year that we'll be giving a large coin for Reed to keep, and it's got his name engraved on it with the year, as well as now, this is one of only 15 coins like this, a keeper coin or pocket coin that he can have as well. On behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association, the Bridgewater Fire Department, and the many communities you have served, thank you for extraordinary service. Congratulations, Reed, on this well-deserved recognition. Please join me in a round of applause as we celebrate the remarkable achievements of Reed Wynott.
Glad to see everybody's here.
First of all, thank you, everyone, for coming out to this on our birthday, 125 years. It's something quite special for the town. And I want to thank the Stanley Club for this stamp cancellation, right? It's a pictorial stamp cancellation. I have in my pocket the last one that I keep in my office at Town Hall from 2017, where we had the one for Bitchanewiska Park, which also has the nice stamp on it.
I call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order, and as always, we are located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it is our privilege to be here. The agenda's been circulated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, motion approved, the agenda as circulated. Council Wyonut seconded by Council Frasier, all those in favor? Supposed, motion is carried. Down to announcements. Of course, tomorrow at the Senetaph, weather permitting, but it's looking good. There will be our annual Remembrance Day ceremony, there will be a parade, a march that begins at the Legion and then arrives at the Senetaph, so I would suggest that people rock to the Senetaph early, at least quarter to, if not earlier. For those who have been, you know how moving that ceremony is and well-attended, especially by young people, and for those who don't, have never been, especially new people to our community, especially from another province, I think of like Ontario, it's not, like it's just a normal workday in Ontario, school is in, so they, their services don't generally have that kind of attendance, so if there are folks new to our community, certainly I found it moving when I first moved here, so people will attend. Yesterday, Saturday, I attended the Indigenous Veterans Remembrance Day, or ceremony, if you will, and it was quite moving. It was the first one down at the Legion, at our Legion, and you know how you, especially when you talk to James, Jeremy, or people like that, it only takes a couple of minutes before you learn something that you didn't know, and I posted this earlier, I did not realize that all the First Nations and Indigenous people that volunteered for the wars lost their status. I did not know that. I'm embarrassed to say I didn't know that, but I haven't talked to anyone else since Saturday who knew that. And, I mean, I just, in my head, I just think, just thinking, if a country that has not treated you overly well, you still sign up to serve that country, and then when you come back, it's happened all over again. Anyway, I just, I hope that as we work towards more reconciliation, people will be more open to education and understanding, but that was something I never knew. And so I do hope it's maybe articulated tomorrow at the Remembrance Day service in the Senetaph for other people to hear as well. Deputy Mayor.
I attended the Bridgewater Junior High ceremony today. It was a lovely ceremony, I was very, very honored to be able to participate. The students had, they'd all produced some art that was shared on the screen. It was a very nice ceremony, there were some performers who did some poetry and songs, and the students were very engaged, really participated, really seemed interested in what was happening, very respectful. It was, it was a really, really nice event, and Mr. Rodenizer, I think, said has been doing that ceremony for 13 years now, and does a really, really great job of engaging the students in the history and, and really appreciating what the day is all about, so it was, it was a really fantastic event, I was really, really excited to be there. And I would also like to congratulate our mayor, who has now been elected as NSFM's, I always get the acronym wrong, now that they changed it, new board president. NSFM represents the municipalities in Nova Scotia and does a lot of advocacy work for us, and very important in the work that we do, and we know what your leadership has been for, for this community, so now to spread it and extend it across the province is fantastic, and we thank you for stepping up and taking that role.
Thank you. Big shoes to fill after Pam moved, but I look forward to it. It was a very interesting conference.
It's a great conference.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, and yeah, we had some interesting debates and discussion and good sessions, and yes, thank you, thank you for that. I am looking forward to the, to the work ahead. Other announcements from folks?
Just last week, on November 5th, shout out to our Downtown Bridgewater Business Committee, who held an event in partnership with NSCC to showcase our amazing downtown to NSCC students, so huge thank you to them, to the Rosewater Social Club for hosting that event, and then for all the students who came out, always really appreciate that. And then upcoming Thursday, we've got Energize Bridgewater is having their program celebration at NSCC from, I believe it's 10 to 12:30, so that will be great to have some discussions and some reflections, and I know later on, Thursday afternoon at 2:00 PM, the farmers' markers will be sharing their feasibility study as well. So lots of great stuff, Thursday's a busy day.
That's great. Thank you. Other announcements? Hearing none, we have the minutes for the October 27th regular council meeting and the October 27th public hearing. I have a motion to approve both of those, please. Council Newell, seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, and we are down to 10.1, which is the RFD from the EDI Committee Training.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you recall back in August, we came and talked about the DEI training that's going to be taking place for staff, and council accepted that they will do all the same training, but you asked us to go back and talk to some of the committees and find out whether their level of commitment could sustain them in doing the program as well. So we checked in with the committees, and there was lots of positive feedback, but I think the recommendation at this point is that it would be better for people to, you know, to recommend that they do the training, and for those that can, they will. There's one or two people that are challenged to find the time over the next little while to get the training done, but they are enthusiastic about the program, so the recommendation that we've brought back is to encourage people to take the training, and we'll make the training available, and if we need to do some in-person training to accommodate the accessibility piece, staff can do that as well.
That's great. Questions of the Acting CIO? Council Call?
Do you like a motion?
Yes, please.
I recommend that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater send correspondence to all council committees offering to the members EDI training and encouraging the members to complete this training as appropriate.
Thank you. Moved and seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald, further discussion? Hearing none, all those, oh, Council.
I have a question, yeah. We say EDI, that's also including the accessibility training, though?
Correct. You have the P4G training for diversity and inclusion, and then accessibility training.
Yep. Thank you for the clarification. We have a move and a second, are all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. We are down to 10.2, which is presentation from Dr. Reva, who's joining us from McGill, and not a new face by any means to this community or this council, so welcome, Dr. Reva, thank you for coming in and joining us.
Thank you so much, thank you so much again for giving me the opportunity to, you know, to do this work in collaboration with the community, with the Town Council, staff, with whom I've been working for a very long time. Great privilege to be here. As you remember, I was here in early April, just before we launched the 2025 survey on energy needs, housing needs, and well-being in the community. So we were hoping to recruit 500 people from Bridgewater to complete the survey. Overall, it's close to 600 that answered. There were a few more, but, you know, we settled at 593 participants. To be eligible, people had to be residing in Bridgewater, that we confirm with the six-digit postal code, they had to be aged 19 years and older, owning or renting their dwelling, having lived at their address when they completed the survey, at least in January 2025. One participant per household could fill the survey, and there's 75 or 70, there's two different numbers on the slides, we're still, you know, doing some analysis, so let's say 70 participants completed both the 2022 and the 2025 survey. As in 2022, the survey could be completed online, on the phone, and in person. We asked questions around housing condition, energy use and cost, health and well-being, demographics, mobility, so the same questions that we asked in 2022, but in 2025, we added questions about energy efficiency improvements that households received over the past three years. And this time around, we increased the gift cards that we gave to participants to thank them for their involvement in the survey, so everyone received a $15 gift cards to Fresh Cuts. As in 2022, participant could decide to keep the gift card or to donate it to a local food banks. As a result, through the survey, we will be donating close to $1,400 to community organizations in Bridgewater. Why is the survey's importance? Well, we are taking stock with this survey of how things have changed since 2022, so since Energize Bridgewater was fully launched. There's growing challenges around energy and housing affordability in Bridgewater, but also across Canada, and there's noticeable changes in housing and energy needs since 2022. So this survey really allows us to take stock on where the town is three years after the full launch of Energize Bridgewater, but it's also the most in-depth study on the interconnection between energy needs, housing, and well-being anywhere in Canada, and the results can be used to support advocacy, support programming, and support local policies. In the next slides, I present a set of first results from the survey, so data is or are reported for 2025. In many slides, data is compared between the 2022 and the 2025 survey, and when numbers are shown in red, it means that there is a statistically significant difference. And what this means is that there's less than a 5% likelihood that, you know, the difference, we observe it by chance. So remember that most people did not participate to both surveys, so we have, you know, a profile in 2022, we have a profile in 2025, so we are comparing how things have changed at the community level over three years, not how, you know, the lives of, you know, 500 people in Bridgewater changed over time. When we look at the socioeconomic profile of the participants, we see that they are comparable in terms of age, gender, marital status, and education. We see, though, that in 2025, people reported significantly higher household income. But when we compare these income levels to data from the 2021 census, which is the latest available census data, the numbers we have for household income in 2025 are closer to the numbers for Bridgewater from the 2021 census, and when we compute constant dollars for 2022, the differences between the two survey years are not statistically significant for average household income. So overall, very similar profiles of people who answered both surveys. Also a similar profile when we look at housing situation and housing condition. So we have roughly, well, we have pretty much exactly the same proportion of owners and renters who filled the survey, people in similar dwelling type, and experiencing similar dwelling conditions in terms of repairs needed to the dwelling, frequency the dwelling feels damp, or problem with mold. We see that in 2025, significantly more participants reported living in dwellings that were more recently built, and recently being 1995 and older, so not, I mean, not that recent. So in terms of type of heating and source of energy, there's significantly more participants reporting heating with heat pump as their main source of heating in 2025 compared to 2022. And when we look at the main source of energy for home heating, we see that there's a significant, there are significantly fewer participants who report heating with oil in 2025 compared to 2022. So given what we know in terms of program delivery, you know, this, you know, these are interesting results, but we see that there's no difference in average home energy spending between the two survey years. We asked a series of questions of home energy upgrades that people could have received in the past three years, and we grouped them around upgrades to the heating system, to the envelope, people reported LED light bulbs, other upgrades as well. We've asked, but if we, you know, turn our attention to heating system and envelope, and upgrades targeting these two domains of housing, we see that about 35, well, 35% of participants reported having received an upgrade to the heating system, and 28% to the envelope, so improved insulation, new doors and windows, air sealing, et cetera. And then in terms of heating system, we have heat pumps, either mini-split or whole ducted heat pump system with air conditioning, high-efficiency wood, or pellet stove or boilers, et cetera. 25% of survey participants did not receive upgrades of any kind. Among people reporting receiving upgrades in the past three years, we also asked them, okay, well, how, you know, how did you finance these upgrades, or which program did you benefit, benefited from? Many said the household paid for them, keeping in mind here that, you know, we still have the LED light bulbs in these numbers, so we're, we're still cleaning out the data. Many also said the property owner undertook the improvement. 18% of the participants, or close to 20% of people who received home energy upgrades, said that they received the upgrades through programs that are part of Energize Bridgewater family of programs, so EB Home Energy Upgrades, Clean Energy Financing, Oil-to-Heat Pump Affordability Program, and the Home Warming Program. We also asked a question about whether people had heard about Energize Bridgewater, and it was half of survey participants said that they had heard about all the activities and programs available through Energize Bridgewater. This slide compares upgrades received by annual household income, paying attention here to upgrades to the heating system and to the envelope, and a combination of the two. So we see that people reporting upgrades to heating system, envelope, in the past three years, also reported higher household income. When we compare the ratio of energy spending to annual household income, people receiving upgrades also had a lower ratio of energy spending to household income. So here, just keeping in mind that we are not comparing before and after receiving the upgrades, but those who received upgrades versus those who did not. Moving to energy hardship measures, so here you have different, different indicators of what we term energy poverty for this report, spending more than 10% of household income to energy bills for the home, or spending more than twice the national median share of energy spending to household income, so spending roughly more than 6%. And overall, we see a reduction in the numbers between 22 and 25, but the difference is not statistically significant. I'll come back to that in a few minutes. If we look at different indicators of thermal comfort, so we ask people to report on their ability to keep the dwelling adequately warm, for example, the temperature at which they keep their dwelling when at home, and whether the dwelling was so cold that they shivered inside, could see their breath inside, or had a hard time sleeping. Again, we don't see that much difference, but we see a significantly lower proportion of participants reporting keeping average indoor temperature below 18 degrees, and that is a threshold that is recommended by the World Health Organization. Turning now to indicators of energy-related financial hardship experience in the past year, so we asked people whether they could or could not afford to keep the dwelling warm, whether they had to juggle bills to pay for utilities, if they had to cut back on groceries to pay for utilities, if they had difficulty paying utility bills on time, they received a disconnection notice, skip or delayed mortgage or rent payment to pay for, for utilities. Again, we see no difference between the two survey years, but we see a lower proportion of participants that said that there were days when the home was not heated. To me, the fact that we don't see a change is actually a very good thing. You know, we, we might have hoped to see a reduction, but given the increase in energy prices, inflation, the increase in housing prices, that different indicators of energy poverty state stable are trending, you know, lower, is a very good, very good outcome. We also have to keep in mind that this survey is conducted with people who are stably housed, right? So we know that there are many people in the community and in the surrounding area that are struggling with housing, that are on house, so this survey does not report on their experience, and we know that accessing and affording energy is essential for meetings, one need, so we are missing these people from the survey. We asked questions about energy hardship in meeting transportation needs. So significantly fewer people reported having difficulty affording transportation needs in the past year in 2025 compared to 2022, and then there were fewer people who were considered in double energy poverty, so spending more than 10% of household income on home energy and transportation needs. So taking you back to 2022, right, the price of oil or gasoline at the pump was really high, it actually peaked in Nova Scotia in June 2022, when we were in the community doing the survey. When we were doing this survey in May, June of this year, the price at the pump was 50 cents cheaper than it was when we conducted the survey three years ago, right? So this is probably what we are seeing in these numbers. So there are several next steps and many different directions that we can take as we prepare the final reports, and any request, wish for information, anything you would like to see appear in the reports, I would be very happy to, to hear from you. Just to flag the 70 participants. Just to flag the 70 participants who participated to both the 2022 and 2025 survey, several received some kind of upgrades. And when we're looking at a different energy poverty indicator, these are the numbers that we are seeing at the moment. But we are still cleaning. It's really complicated to link people across survey. We have to make sure that, you know, we, we are matching the, the same people. And we are, you've received, I think, a summary report that I've submitted a while ago. I can send that report again. And then I will update this report to make it a longer report with, with more interpretation of results shortly.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I know you said a lot of the numbers that aren't, other than the ones in red, they're not, you know, they're not statistically significant. But I appreciate that you called out the fact that even if they haven't, because of inflation and the cost of things going up, it is at least not going in the wrong direction. But I am, I am pleased when I look at the ones that are, most of the ones that are statistically significant, they are going in the right direction, seeing a huge reduction on people on oil. And conversely, a lot more people on heat pump, which probably contributes to the reason why more people are being able to keep their house above 18 degrees versus before. So there's, there's, I think there's a lot of positives to take from this. It at least helps me feel like what we've done is, is working. Wouldn't let up off the gas right now. But it, it, it just, it tells me that it's been working. This has been obviously many years in progress. So appreciate the data backing up the, basically what we were hoping it would. So I don't know, council has questions, Councilor Caldwell?
I was also interested in the jump in heat pump use and the drop in oil. So do you know how that would compare to trends in the province or the country? Is this unique to this area or is it?
I, I do not know, but this is something that I can definitely look into as we prepare the, the final report. But if we think back to the first iteration of Greener Homes Canada, where people could access heat pump across the country and the rush to heat pump that has been happening, I think this is reflective of what's going on in Nova Scotia and elsewhere. But I can try to look for trends and I'll put this in the report to compare how things, things compare in Bridgewater versus the rest of the country. But this is me very, being very optimistic that NRCan is sharing that information publicly to researchers. I know I've asked them in the past to present numbers on some of their survey. There's probably the survey of household and the environment. I think it was just released for researchers. So I might have to request access to the data, but that's something that I'll, I'll look into and I'll do if that's the only way to have the information.
Okay, great.
Other questions? Councilor Fager?
Yes, thank you for your report. I found it very interesting summary. And when, I, I don't know, just a question around putting around CPI and inflation in those couple of years that you document from 2022 to 2025. When you look at saying, for example, the average home energy spending was about the same from 2022 to 2025. But I guess if you talked about a little bit about CPI and what inflation, the cost of living was over that time span, it may sort of put a more light on to, yeah, why, why there are greater savings. It's because the cost of living increased.
Yeah, that's relevant. Yeah. Yeah. I'll speak to a colleague of mine who's an economist because I'll see if we could do trends. You know, household income was, was easy to compare in terms of $20,000. But I'll check against CPI.
Okay.
Okay.
First, it's not the gas, it's the accelerator. Get it right, we're talking about green energy. Just using the Bank of Canada's inflation calculator to answer your question. In today, it'd be $3,640. So, you know, like, because I had the same kind of thought. So I mean, it is, you know, it's a pretty decent, once you factor in, you know, inflation, it's a pretty, pretty decent difference in costs. So I'm sure an economist would give better numbers than that, but at least using the, the calculator I had here, so that was interesting.
Yes, but I tried that, but there's some things where it didn't totally work.
It's not perfect, yeah.
Okay, but that's good, but I'll go back to this.
Offhand, it was, offhand, I was just curious, right? It was interesting. Do you know off the top of your head, how many people were surveyed in 2022?
Well, 514 people replied.
Okay, okay, excellent.
So we had more this time around.
Awesome. May I, may I keep? Out of curiosity, how do you determine the less than a 5% likelihood of chance?
Well, that, that is convention. So it's the, it's the error that we can live with when we are doing analysis. So 5% is usually the convention. We could work with a 10% as well because we have a smaller sample size. But then it gives us, you know, more room for error to misinterpret some of the results. So if we had, because I, I did check, if we had used the 10% margin of errors, then the difference in the expenditure-based measure of energy poverty, one or two in there, not all, become statistically significant, lower if we are willing to accept a 10% margin of error. So I can also build that in the report. So sample size is low. We're not, you know, this is the way that we are analyzing data. I'm, I like to keep things at 5% because, you know, it has a lot of implications for a result. But I can, initially in the report, I had put the p-value. So the, you know, the error. So usually the p-value, so it's a probability. So lower than 5%, so this is the 5% that we have. But I, I had put the actual p-value with the numbers. And sometime it's 0.67, or I'm just throwing numbers. So it's still under the 10%. So if, as a council, you're willing to live with 10% as a margin of error, you know, there's different ways that I can report the results. And you can work with the numbers.
Take me back to my university statistics.
Yes.
So real trauma there, I appreciate it. I do have one more question. If I can make Mike laugh, then it's, it's a good day. I'm wondering if you, from your professional experience, have any cause for concern. So it's, it's positive to see that the indoor average temperature is held below 18 degrees, has dropped significantly. But then below it, shivered inside the dwelling, dwelling increased as well as hard time sleeping also increased. I know those two numbers aren't statistically significant, you know, within the margin of error, but those jumped out to me as.
Oh, yeah, they're, yeah, yeah. No, I fully agree with you. This is concerning. And it's probably not the same people who reply to these questions, right? Yes, so they are concerning. This is the only place in Canada where we have these numbers. I introduced these indicators in the 2022 survey based on a comment from a colleague of mine in New Zealand. They use these questions regularly in New Zealand because the houses are not insulated, they don't have central heating. And so people do see their breath inside in the winter. And I thought, well, it's Canada, it doesn't happen. Seems to be happening. And so it is concerning, but we don't have other sources of comparison. Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Folks on the table? Just in terms of the 5% and the 10%, I, I don't know about you. I would just use whatever you feel we should be using in terms of best practice.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't want it to come across as skewing the numbers or anything like we, yeah, so.
It's not skewing the numbers. It's, it's, it's a low sample size, right? If we had done this survey on the whole population of Nova Scotia, results might have reached statistical, statistical significance. But I can bring that information in the final report as well to show the nuances of how we interpret numbers in simple terms. I'll try.
All right.
Last chance for questions. Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Uwe. Thank you once again for joining us. Down to new business, we have the building permit reports for October 2025. And again, shaping up for this year, year-to-date, to be another busy year for town and staff, as is also evidenced by the traffic. But we're not going to talk about that. Down to 11.2 notice, so this is notice for revisions to policy 110 land sales. You're speaking that or Dawn is speaking that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a recommendation and a request that Town Council give notice for its intention to consider amendments to policy 110. This is the land sales policy that, that guides our land sales within the Bridgewater Business Park and in particular its expanding area. There are a couple of elements within the policy. When it was originally prepared and presented in 2022, we reviewed the timelines for construction and looked at the touch points for construction components while a proponent is building. And so we've tightened those up to secure our process of engaging with developers in a timely fashion to deliver on construction and obviously use up the property for its intended purpose. So we've tightened up those pieces within this policy. And there were a number of minor housekeeping elements. The only other piece that we are bringing forward as changes within the policy is the removal of the actual application. In many instances here within town, our policies are policies that stand, and we have applications that are separate so that we've got some flexibility if we want to ask for additional information or if we want to make a change to the actual application. It isn't an amendment required to come before council with a full policy. So from an administrative perspective, we're requesting that the application itself be removed from the policy. So just a couple of tweaks there that will further strengthen our position when we bring it forward with the offers for entertaining purchasing of lands at exit 12A. So just serving notice at your next council meeting, we'll be looking for adoption of those, those changes. So packages within your, your own package. If you have any questions, we can certainly entertain those, but they're pretty straightforward.
Perfect. This is just giving notice, but if there's any questions? If not, someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Caldwell, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the November 24th, 2025 meeting, council will consider amendments to policy 110 land sales with respect to changes as outlined in document 25-182.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Newell, further discussion made none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. In your package, you have the discussion session notes from November 3rd. So this is my reminder to the public that all the documents, everything that we have is available on the town's website under Council and Agenda. And you can click the hyperlinks and it'll take you right down to the documents. Thank you, Amanda, for that. But yeah, everything we have is, is there as well. And we had a robust discussion on the challenges of wastewater and the wastewater treatment plants, which will be coming back to future council meetings. We also have the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program report for October. Very busy, lots of challenges there, but very fortunate to have this in our region. Down to our last item before we have an in-camera meeting is 11.5, the CIO procurement awards report. Welcome to the Director of Finance.
Good evening. This one will be short as well, hopefully. So as you all know, our procurement policy with number 79 was amended in 2023 to allow the CIO to award procurements up to $250,000. And then there is a special list that can be over that. There's a few qualifications, such as it has to be within budget and so on. So the lists for quarter one and quarter two of this fiscal year are included as attachments to the report. There were about 18 awards over that six-month period, and so those are all noted. If there are items that come in over budget, then they would be brought forward to council for a decision on award so that council can make a determination on whether that's awarded and how any overage would be funded, for example. So those are all included there. If you have any questions about any particular ones, I'm happy to answer those. But for the most part, it's just report to council to ensure that you're always aware of those. And that is required in the policy that we provide this list.
Questions from Councilor Caldwell?
So a number of the items were significantly under the budget estimate. Is this something that's just a fluke or is it some sort of trend we might expect?
Sometimes the budget might be for multiple things.
Oh, okay.
We're definitely not a trend to have things under budget.
She's going to ask the question. It's like saying it'll be a short meeting, man.
But also be aware that these aren't like multimillion-dollar construction contracts. Like, these generally are smaller things. But even when we buy a vehicle, after we purchase a vehicle, it's outfitted, stickered, and, you know, some of those things. So the purchase of the vehicle is within the budget of, say, $110,000. And it might come in, you know, five or 10 under, but that's because we still have some other things to do that will fall within that budget as well, just as an example.
Other questions?
Although all the line numbers are, you know, such-and-such plus HST, I assume the budgetary estimate concludes our, includes our HST costs. So like, I think they're a little closer to the actuals.
And there's also like the net HST factor because we don't get all our HST back. So we can, the trouble, the trouble is when someone bids, they bid this price plus HST. So that's why we're disclosing it in that column that way. And we also provide the budget just for your information, you know, to prove that it was within the budget. So we could add an additional column with that net HST might be more helpful. But also contracts could have been awarded when there was 15%. And by the time it settles and we pay the invoice, we might be at 14%.
Maybe in four years, we'll get another HST point.
That was redirected, Miss Pounds. Okay. Another discussion for another day. Other questions? Hearing now some prepared to make a motion? Councilor Newell, thank you.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater accept the April 2025 and June 20, to June 2025 and July 25 to September 2025 report of the CIO procurement award approvals for quarter one and quarter two in fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. We have an in-camera meeting following this under section 222E of Municipal Government Act for contract negotiations. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Please, Councilor Newell, seconded by Councilor Fager. We are adjourned.